Jay, which one are you leading us?
I'm leading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation in whose majesty is the most important in all history.
Alright, this was an executive session and refers to RCW 423110, performance of public official or employee. We will be heading into executive session. There will be no action taken after this session and it will go until seven o'clock. Our next meeting begins at seven. So we're going to adjourn to executive session.
All right, we are bringing to close our executive session at 6:58. And we will reconvene in two minutes for our meeting.
Good job.
All right, we're going to bring this meeting to order at seven o'clock. And if we could please stand. Bailey, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the principle of liberty, of one nation, of the equal to all.
So we thank you all for being here. We're really excited because we get to start this meeting out with recognition of some outstanding community members and for the work that they've done. Superintendent Brower, would you like to introduce why these two have been nominated for this special recognition?
Yeah, you know, it's rare when you're hitting on all cylinders. And one of the things that has been a concern is how do we help students who may come to us at various stages of development, charity, academic preparation as such? And how do we help them to become, to move along just as other students move forward academically? And then what about those who may move into the district or maybe over time something happens in their life? And maybe they're just not keeping up with all of the academic requirements and such. So last year, we had Bev and Mayor who came forward and they had some money that had been given to help scholarship students. And when we heard the word scholarship, we sometimes you think, well, it's students who are going straight to University of Washington or somewhere in that way. But the idea was they were very willing to hear and to collaborate and come up with ideas on how could we scholarship students who right here in the Eatonville School District and create a perpetual fund wherein we had $2.3 billion that were then if we were able to just on the interest of that money, we could utilize that money each year to help those students to keep up, to catch up and to progress. And so through the full year, we come up with some different ideas and eventually it came out to be just a beautiful model of it's by school, school before school, after school, during school, at each level. And because of that, then we have been able to put in place a tutoring program, which now is, if you read the latest dispatch, then you'll see an article that talks about Eatonville High School exceeds ninth grade academic success goal. And I'll go into that more when I go to superintendent communications. But there's a little piece about a special thing to go with the recent work we played a vital role in supporting struggling students through the lunchtime tutoring program for ninth and tenth grade students. And so that's how that relates to the high school that each school is utilizing a little bit. But what we've been able to do now is we've been able to create a perpetual fund that allows for tutoring based on the enriching every school. And for that, and therefore leadership and generosity and for working with us to try to create the the very best scenario possible for all our students, then we would like to recognize, and I'll let school board president go from here.
Could we have Bev and David, could you come forward?
Got one little detail.
Let's walk around that way. With gratitude and honor and appreciation for your innovation and your willingness to think outside the box and to decide what's best for students. We offer you this certificate of recognition that really adequately show our appreciation, but hopefully you know that we recognize all that you do and we're so grateful.
I'm able to give this to the mission to you, Dave, because of all that you've done over the years and everything that you've done to help with helping students get advanced and get to a place where they want to be, can be. And we know that they will go further. And so thank you so much.
Just don't blink. I got lots.
All right. Thank you again. All right. Always great to start a meeting with that kind of recognition. And our community, I just want to recognize that our community is so supportive and so great. All right, student representative comments.
So our wrestling team went to state and we had 11 wrestlers compete and two of our wrestlers placed sixth, Praise to Rosa and Jameson Becker, which is great for them. And then I just want to say a thank you. I know this is really personal for the basketball parents because they went out and decorated all of our cars for our state tournament, which was really cool. So just a shout out to them. We have conferences on March 7th for the spring conferences. Seniors just finished off their senior papers and I have to say the senior teachers this year, I appreciate them starting that now because when we do our senior presentations and things get super busy at the end of the year, them doing that as a first semester project took a lot off of us, which was amazing because now we start CBAs, senior presentations, graduations, scholarships. So that was a great planning thing on their part, in my opinion. Spring sports start on Monday. And another senior thing, we got to hear the perspective of Kyle Itzenberger as he came and gave his experiences while he was living in Ukraine. And that really went along with our Ukraine and Russia unit. And it was just a great experience to be able to see firsthand what people were doing as we're learning about it. So that was a great break from the notes for us.
All right. And then peer students just finished midterms, which was super, super fun. And they're about two, three weeks out from the end of winter term and then spring term starts late April, I'm pretty sure. And then I have some fingers actually to pass out really quick. Easier. Well, the anti-bullying and civility committee, I actually partnered with EMS and they created the kindness thing, which is super important. Student leaders who are impacting EMS and trying to try kindness and highlight kindness rather than no reprimand bullying. And this survey just shows those non-binary students at EMS and it just shows the statistics and the rates of bullying and what was around that. And it shows they found that actually 45.2% of bullying and intimidation always with the circle. So they're creating like school monitors instead of, you know, administration monitoring the hallways, they're actually having students do it. They can spend all their morning time to make sure and monitor hallways. And I'm pretty sure Sneezy could also partnering with them to make some T-shirts that say like student leader ASB. And instead of reprimanding bullying, they're actually going to try to highlight kindness instead. So they're making kindness tickets. So every time they see someone doing, you know, a kind action or something like that, they're going to hand out a ticket. And hopefully those tickets will then be accumulated and it's going to be turned into a raffle just to highlight kindness around the school. And then at the end of the year, they're actually going to keep all of those tickets. And at the end of the year, at the end of assembly, they're going to ask all the students who ever received a kindness ticket to come down onto the floor. And their hope is that there's going to be more students on the floor than in the bleachers. And that'll just show how much they did throughout the year. So that's also really.
And thank you for sharing that out.
Thank you.
Outstanding. The value of student representation. These are great examples. Thank you so much. All right. I would consider any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. I would consider motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Hearings of individuals in groups. Bonnie, can you check and see?
There's not, I just grabbed it.
Okay. Oh, great. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Reports and presentations. Super excited to have Kurt Plager here today with D. Davidson. If you have ever wanted to learn, this is a great man to learn about school finance. He's got all the answers for every question you would ever have. And then he'll create questions you didn't know you needed to ask. So thank you. And then he'll create questions you didn't know you needed to ask. So thank you.
She's setting you up.
Gracing some familiar faces. I apologize if I'm in a crowd that doesn't want to hear about taxes tonight, but that's my superpower. Where I have a couple of goals tonight. I'm not sure if you'll be able to bring the presentation up. What I'd love to do is talk a little bit about your EPNO levy, your capital levy that was just recently passed by voters. Talk a little bit about your bond and do a recap of tax rates for 2025 now that I have your, your attention. And so we're going to dig in a little bit and then just share some updates. And then we're going to dig into something that some schools are doing when they do pass a capital projects levy to combat construction inflation, whether they consider if they want to borrow against the capital levy to start the projects earlier. We're going to talk about the pros and cons of that as well. So perfect. So please let me know if you have any questions. And thank you for being the DJ. We'll be moving to slide two. This slide is just really to make sure that everybody in the room is all up to speed on what we're going to be talking about. And these three different types of school measures that are available to us. And the first one is the education program and operational levy. These are flexible revenues and I do air quotes around flexible because we know we're still using local support to back the basic education. We don't get all the funding that we need for school nurses, for special education, for our bus routes, for school lunches, for electricity, for insurance. So I could go on and on here for class size reduction. What that revenue is supposed to be is just basically straight up for arts, drama, music, sports, extra things, enrichment for our students. But we're still using a lot of that to take care of basic debt. So it is, the intent is there, but we're not quite there yet from the state. I know every year legislators work really hard at trying to get it better. And a lot of you testify in a lot of those bills as well. You are subject to laws that will maximize what you can ask for. And I think you're really close to that maximum right now, if not at that maximum. You can do a four-year levy and that's what you've done. There's a balance. People ask, should we do a four-year levy? Should we do a two-year levy? Most of your peers are doing force. And for you have stability. And the voters say yes, you know what you're going to have for four years and you don't have to get tax fatigue by asking them to pass the measures over and over. The nice thing about levies, they're simple majority. That doesn't mean they're easy. And your current levy is approved through 2028. Isn't that nice? You have to worry about levies for four more years. Time will fly though. You most recently started passing capital projects levies in your community. So a lot of our larger school districts, even about Seattle or Lake Washington or Eska, all have these capital levies. So many schools are trying to follow suit and have a dedicated nest egg for fixing roofs, HVAC, technology, safety, security. And you guys have had this now your second round of a capital projects levy. So congrats on that. Those are up to six years. Yours is six years and yours is approved through 2030. Now, bonds are for buildings. So while capital levy can help buildings, they're not really for building buildings unless you're really big like Seattle. They could do a capital levy to build elementary schools. But the school bonds are for new construction renovations. Your last bond was in 2006 and it was for 30 years. So you still got about another 10 years on that one before it's paid off. So if you're trying to think down the road, some schools do a new bond before the other one paid off and it's a new tax. Some schools wait for the bond to pay off before they ask for the next one. So if you're in that model, think about about 2034, 2035 is when you're going to have all those taxes mature. Now, the bonds are their 60% super majority for now. So we're not going to dig too much into bonds. We also keep an eye on your bonds in case there's any refunding opportunities. I think the last time I was here in front of the board was during a refunding before the pandemic. So how have you done lately on your EPNO levies in green? Your capital levies in tan and your bonds in gray? You'll notice levies and asking for people to approve taxes is kind of like a roller coaster. And it goes up and down. There's good years and bad years. I would say in 2024, you had some really good years. 57.3%, 58%. If you look around you, there's schools that have a really hard time getting simple majority. And you might see some of the headlines to the, I won't name those schools right now, but just be grateful they get 50%, let alone 58%. I like to think you had really good timing. You ran your 2020 levy a month before the pandemic. And then your 24, one about four years after the pandemic. So really good job not running one in the middle of the pandemic. Good timing there. Lots of momentum on our side. You'll see a little bit of red there. Bonds are tough. It's tough. You never know how people relate to a project or relate to new taxes or have a personal idea about what they think you should do. So while a lot of people can agree on levies for teachers and kids and sports and capital levy for technology bonds, you really need everybody on the same page. And you can see sometimes those are hard to get support for. But sometimes like in 2006, everybody agrees. So it really depends on those projects. But yours are really firing on all cylinders. This shows how much community support you have right now and that's something to really embrace. So who are those people? Who are the taxpayers? This is a chart that shows all of your homeowners put together, all of your restaurants, all your grocery stores, all your business owners, your car shops. And what you'll notice is I made a mistake here. You can see the numbers were just right around a billion in 2013, 2014. But because you've grown so fast, those numbers didn't quite fit on the chart. You've tripled in three years. And I know a lot of you in this room maybe feel that, that your assessed valuations used to be a lot under real estate values. You would never say what is assessed for in the county is what I'd sell it for. It was always like, well, it's assessed for this much, but I wouldn't sell it for that. The counties kind of across the state post pandemic have really done a big shift to get your home values close to market values. And you might've felt that. So that's a big change. Also, the lack of housing, the people moving into the area, the new construction has also been a big aspect of your growth. In the last few years, you've had a hundred million in new construction in the last three years alone. So think about how many new homes that is and how much new business that is. But you grew 26% in between 22 and 23. Things have settled down since then. So maybe people might not be noticing the huge spikes anymore. I think across the state, we're seeing assessors kind of step back and think we might've overdid it a little bit and we need to slow down now. But you're taxing that with three billion. It's a huge number. So that's who pays the bill. What is the bill? And this is a copy in green of your education levies over the years. You might wonder what that red is, that red that says with rollback. Anytime you are asking for a levy and is above the state levy lid loss, you're kind of hamstrung to have either $2.50 of your tax base or a certain amount per pupil. And if you're ever asking for more than that, the county assessor is going to regulate that and put it back to the amount. So you'll notice over the last few years, the voters were more than supportive. Please, but we vote yes on this. And the state said that's above your limits. And there's a lot of schools in the same boat as you where the voters are actually more generous than state law and actually approving things, but you legally can't collect them. So in your most recent levy, you made that adjustment and you said, maybe we shouldn't ask for more than we're legally allowed to collect. It doesn't make sense to ask for more than just roll it back. So you can see now you're kind of more along the trend line of where your levy lid is.
So ask a question.
Yes.
So if the growth continues and we are now at our current, you know, we are just equal with our current status. That means the rate's going to go down for our community as our growth continues over the next four years.
Correct. You think about now your levy is approved. You see, I was just slightly more each year. That's meant to grow with new construction and that it's a slight increase for inflation and that's kind of been your model for years. Anytime your property values grow faster, that doesn't mean the board has the magic power to increase taxes. The voters have approved an amount. It is locked in through 2028. That capital levy is locked in through 2030. Your bond's locked in through 2035. There are other municipal entities that do get to take a rate. And without a vote of the people. So do you think, well, my taxes are going up. It's got to be something the school districts are doing. For the most part, that's other municipal entities that is a rate base and it grows with your community. It'd be really nice if we could be that way. But and it's long story short, I'll show you your tax rates coming up and you'll see they've been kind of plummeting over the last decade. But you have three more years left. You're in the current year 25. We talked about being at your levy lid and it's hard to estimate into the future, right? You had to look into the future for five years. You are going to be about $49,000 shy of your levy lids. That's pretty good. So we say you left a little bit of money on the table, but you got this close. You're off by less than a half a percentage point away from that amount. And it also grows by inflation each year. So that's the number. You can just adjust just a little bit each year.
How much are, with inflation, how much is it per student that we're getting right now?
I want to say 3,200 per student.
I was thinking it was 3193.
It started at 2,500 in that little lull in 2019 and it grows with inflation. Somebody might ask, what happened there? That's when the state fully funded education and added a state tax and then limited your local tax. And the goal was we're going to tax everybody in the state. And we're going to give you at least what you lose locally. You lost almost $3 million and you probably didn't get $3 million.
It was not a win for us.
So there's the challenges. So we had, we had to do some work to get back to where we were before the McCleary lawsuit. So it's a lot of information, but hopefully it's just something that's interesting. Nothing here is something that's actionable that you need to go do. It's just, I think it's interesting facts to share with the groups. But you mentioned tax rates and as the community grows faster than our conservative projections, when we go to the ballot, what happens? Take a look at 2013. In green is your education levy. It was 395. In tan, your bond was a dollar eight six. The taxes were 581. Yes, a home was different value there. But now look at today, it's 324. So it's gone down by $2.50 and that hopefully is offset by the increase to people's property values. So the goal here is people might still be paying more. But if you would have left that rate of 581 all the way through here and their home, home value doubled, they'd be paying twice to you. And that's not the case. Your levy is only gone up slightly each year. And then you were able to pass a brand new capital levy, capital tech levy in 2019. And it's been just kind of cruising along. And then to us 25, you get, were able to get an adjustment to do some more projects. But right now, $3.24. I would hate to talk about taxes and not talk about this state tax because there'd be a lot of naysayers like you're missing something. Well, we don't have control over this. The board can't do any. That first slide that it showed you before this, that was the board approved resolutions that go to the voter for the ballot and they vote yes. They don't get a vote yes on state school tax. That's something your legislators do. And in gray is the state school sex that's been there is before I was born. And that's how we fund basic debt. So we collect all this money from everybody in the state. It goes to Olympia, gets put in the blender and it's going to get sent out based on how many kids you have serving lunch, how many kids are in each class and how many routes you travel, learning assistance program, how many English language learners you have, et cetera. That's always been there. The brand new one is the tax they passed in 2018. Do you notice how the new tax in 18 started the year before your tax were dropped in 2019? The state didn't do the full swap. Have you ever seen Indiana Jones? And there's like the thing and they're trying to get the sandbag on top so that the stone doesn't roll anyway. They did that, but they made a mistake. They piled all the taxes up a year early. So everybody in the state felt a tax rate increase. That's when we started failing levies. When people were told you're fully funded and your taxes went up. If they would have smoothed that out and had the taxes start in 2019, could have been a game changer for all those schools that struggled to pass levies. But now we have five lines on your tax statement. So if you open up your property tax statement, you're going to see levy, education levy, technology capital levy, school bond, state schools one, state schools two. So it's a little overwhelming that half the taxes on your statement are going to school, but it is also the paramount duty listed in our constitution as well. So today, people in your community pay $5.63 whole package for education in your community. And it peaked at 8.44 in 2013. It's a lot of information. State school taxes are custom to each county. So if there's somebody in Thurston County at the other end of your property, then they might have a different rate, but I think most folks are in Pierce. So I use that as the example. The interesting thing about the state school's tax too that I'll share is most schools get more back from the tax than they pay. They might not get more back than what they used to have supported by the voters, but they get back more than they pay. Like unless you're Seattle, Lake Washington, Mercer Island, Bellevue, their homes are 1.8 million, 2 million, and they're paying a tax rate that's going to levy. So those schools are kind of helping all the other schools. You might be breaking even. You might be getting a little bit more, but the big, big schools in King County are paying the state school sex and not getting back what they put in. This slide is, I call it a community trust slide. How have you done in your estimates and what you've put on the ballot? And then what actually has happened? In green is what you put to the voters. Please vote yes. This is the amount that you're voting on, but we estimate the rate to be this. The rate isn't locked in until the county has all the property values added up. But you'll notice for the last decade, you've outperformed every year. So you've been conservative in your forecasts and you've told voters this was going to be and you've outperformed that. So maybe one of the reasons you got 58% in your yes vote as well is because you're not telling them a rosy story, vote yes. And then the tax rate comes in higher than you promised. This year, you're under by two cents. So pretty good. It's a pretty good estimate. See, all three years ago, we'll see how you do the next three years. But right now, it looks like your 11th straight year of outperforming your tax rate estimate on the ballot. This next slide, I don't think is a big slide for decision-making, slide nine. But I think it's interesting. It's your neighbors. This is what their tax rates are. So it's pretty small. So I'll kind of summarize here. There's a lot of, there's a lot of schools in Pierce County. And since not all are created equal with property values, this is really different. So you think about a Bethel to your north, right? They have 23 billion in tax base to your three billion. So they can generate a whole bunch more revenue because they have so many more taxpayers. But the tax rates aren't quite apples to apples, but I do think it's still interesting. You are ranked 11th. I don't know how many you're in your county, maybe 15. But you're 11th in tax rate. So you're not the highest, you're not the lowest. You're kind of in that middle two thirds. And these are for 2025. So if you're traveling and you're doing a basketball game or you're doing a, a match and you're at the facilities and you're like, oh my gosh, these are state of the art, these are X, Y, Z. You can take a look at this chart and say, well, what are their bond rates? And you can compare them to yours and say, okay, our bond rate is 77 cents. Bethels is a dollar 75. That makes sense. They're paying and they're getting taxed for these improvements. So something to keep in the back of your mind. And this last slide, before we talk about loan options is slide 10. This shows your, I, I showed you your bill for the EPNO levy. This is now the bill that the voters approved. All those tax, there's all your economy to pay your new capital levy. So you can see the first capital levy approved started at 300,000 to 400,000. This one's 1.3 to 1.7 million. So now you have resources. You promised in that resolution and on your ballot what you will do with those resources. And so now you have a little bit of flexibility on how to accomplish that. And customarily in the old days, we waited, right? We, you looked at after year one. So you haven't received a penny yet. The voter said yes last February. You haven't received a dollar yet, but you'll start to receive it this spring. So you have to wait the whole year to get 1.3 million. So if your project is 1.5 million dollar project, you're waiting about a year and a half, almost two years. In the old days, that wasn't a problem because construction inflation just went slow like everything else, right? You think about the price of eggs right now or the gasoline. Everything's kind of going crazy, just like construction. So some schools, about five this year, have passed capital levies and said, we want to get our projects done earlier. And we want to prioritize those. We don't want to do all the projects, but let's, let's get some done early. And instead of using these dollars in 27 or 28 to do the construction, they're going to use those dollars in 27 or 28 to pay back a bank that let them do the construction early. So let's talk a little bit more about that. So on slide 11, this is a visual of a school that was similar in your size. I updated the numbers a little bit to show some of the challenges with capital levy. In blue is the growth of your fund balance. If you saved every penny and you, you had a project that was worth $5 million, you could see, you draw that line, you'd have to wait until May of 2028 to begin your project. If you had a project that was worth eight million, you'd have to wait until May 2030. So you pull that blue line to see where your revenue is.
That's it, Corey. If you didn't have a roof that failed or an HVAC that failed or others, because then you have all those other expenses that come along as well.
Well, a capital levy is great for tech because you have tech every year, right? You have, you have new Chromebooks, you have new carts or cows, whatever they call them. You have new servers. And so you just, every year the money comes in, you use it for tech. For construction, it works as well too, if your projects are perfectly scheduled for the next four, five years. So the question is, is, is it going to be worth it to think about the interest you might pay to accelerate the project? So red is an example of the expenses that another school would see for their project. And you notice the money doesn't come in aligned with the project. They're done spent the money in 28. And they saw two, three more years of collecting. And uh they saw two, three more years of collecting taxes. So how do you bridge that gap? And do you borrow some upfront? Walla Walla passed a significant capital levy for all athletic improvements throughout the community. And security vestibles and other things. And they said, no, we're going to do them all the summer. So they have a six-year capital levy. They did all the projects over the summer and then that levy is no longer being collected to do projects. It's just paying back the loan. But there are some challenges. So front funding capital levies, that first bullet point says it alleviates cash flow concerns. But it can create other challenges and that first one would be interest, right? It allows work to begin over the summer months and the reason that summer months are helpful too is this, the students are gone. You can get some projects done over the summer and accelerate that. Um and then other tool that people think about is construction inflation. I'm not an expert in construction inflation, but it was about fifteen percent during the pandemic. And interest rates were three percent at that time. So schools were borrowing at three percent. And saving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the project and saying, well, this is the net wash. Right now, construction inflation, somebody told me it's around five percent. Interest rates are around four and a quarter. So it's not as much of a slam dunk right now. It, is it more of a? Can it be a break even for you, but then you get your project in earlier or is it not a break even because you can only use your capital levy to pay back principal? If the board wants to borrow, interest has to be coming from state forests, federal forests, X, Y, Z, other non-voter proof taxes. So that is a big challenge. So a little bit more about the process. Uh what is a limited general location model? Limited in three ways. It's limited because you must repay it with existing revenue. It's limited because it can't be used for new standalone four-wall construction. You can remodel, you can amend, you can rebuild, uh but you cannot do new four-wall buildings. Uh it's also limited your debt capacity. Uh you can only borrow uh three-eighths of one percent. That number for you is ten point two million. So that's the most you could borrow without a vote of the people. Another thing that's a requirement, if you do, do go down this path. Is you must inform the public your intent and open up a public hearing to get their feedback. Anytime you borrow more than a quarter of a million dollars, that's not voted by the people, you want to give them a chance to come voice any concerns or ask questions. Uh I already shared that the interest must be paid by non-tax proceeds. But yeah, any questions on that before I talk about how districts get financing? So the final slide shows three ways that schools get resources for their projects. The very first one is the state treasurer. The state treasurer has a program called the local program, all in bold. I have no idea what it stands for. I tried. Uh I'm sure it's something simple or it could just be the word local because it's meant for local jurisdictions to use the state's power. So the state has this unyielded, just huge capital, they're rated triple A by the state. And they can borrow on your behalf and get you really great interest rates. They do it about two times a year and you can piggyback. And what you do is you join, uh so you're, if you're looking at doing something for the football field, let's say. And then uh Yellma is doing something for fire trucks and Aberdeen is doing something, they're doing a pool. Everybody gets together and the state says, all right, we're going to issue twenty million dollars in bonds. And we're going to do each of your pieces together and there's power in that. Investors want big bonds. Investors want this from the state and they have their credit score. So they're issuing bonds right now at two and a half, three percent. When we're at four and a quarter right now when we go to the banks. So that's really powerful and it's a great option. You lose some flexibility because the state does the whole thing for you. You do what the state tells you to do. They say, okay, this will be paid back over ten years. You say, okay. And they say, we're going to refinance this on your behalf. Okay, but you can't prepay. There's a couple of limitations, but it's a really good option. Another thing that's an option if Pierce County is interested is they could buy it. So you can say to them, we need two million dollars. We want to accelerate some projects. Will you buy this? And it's a really transparent way to do business because there's no banks involved. There's nobody, you know, making big bonuses and big fees. And um everybody can see the treasure information on the website. It's very transparent. The one thing that the treasure lacks is a competitive interest rate. Because they don't care that you're a municipal entity and that you're tax exempt. They'll just, they don't get a benefit from tax exempt investments, so they will give you a taxable rate. So their rates are usually a little higher. Uh that's what we're doing in Aberdeen right now. They're buying property for their seismic grant, trying to find something up on the hill a little bit. And they're considering using the state uh or the county treasurer to do the loan. So it'll be, they won't have to work with the bank.
Are there time constraints on that like there is with the state? So that's something you can negotiate at any time.
Anytime.
If your county is willing and not all counties are willing, correct?
Not are, not all are willing. Uh we've seen Gray's Harbor, um Snohomish and Spokane in the last five years have been interested. And most others are like, no thanks, it seems complicated. I don't want to buy debt from you. So, but it's a great thing to ask to start with.
And do we, the ask, does it go through our county commissioner? Do you know the process?
Uh it usually goes to the treasurer and the treasurer usually has a finance person, an investment person that would be interested. And the reason, they're usually interested if it's short. You know, this isn't going to be a twenty-year instrument. It'd be shorter than your capital levy because that's how it's going to be repaid. So that's one of the things in your favor and we can help facilitate as well. We can talk their lingo. And the last thing, if neither of those two options work and the board is interested, that's when we could step in and help if um you're looking in that direction. That's where we make banks either compete or submit the lowest interest rate that they're willing to do. There's a handful of banks that are local to Washington that are pretty good sized regional banks that are interested. And that's what schools like Natchez Valley did for their HVAC, Highland did for their capital projects, Walla Walla for. Their athletic improvements as they went through the local bank process and uh had them kind of compete for it and try and get the lowest rate possible. And there's some positive there working with local bankers too. Like I kind of made some comments about you have to pay the fees, anybody. Well, sometimes if you're working with a bank, they might be local employees and it'd be a local bank that could offer you a rate too. So there are some trade offs there. Bank placements usually are pretty good on rate and they're pretty flexible. There's a lot of good options. Um you just can't get as low as that state treasurer rate. But it's a, it's a, it's probably our most commonly used option is the bank placement because it can be prepayable. It can, you can set your terms and um there's just a lot of flexibility there and um.
Is it prepayable? A hundred percent or is it, so there's no two-year prepayment penalties?
Okay, it depends on the bank. Yeah, you know, if you ever work with a large bank like JP Morgan or KeyBank or Capital One, they don't want you to call it. They don't want you to pay it off. And so they'll say after two years you can do this or, but a lot of the regional banks, you might have seen Cashmere Valley, you might have seen North Cascades who are now Wheatland. Uh and they are always usually offering uh prepayable anytime, no penalty at par. So.
Excellent. Good to know. Thank you.
It's a lot of options, but these are the three most customally used and really just planting the seed. If there's any, if you are looking towards this and you're working with your capital facility staff. And they think there's a benefit going faster, we'd be happy to put you, point you in the right direction or help you support with a, a bank option if that's where we go.
And if we did a public hearing, is that something you come and present at or is it just something that we?
Okay, yeah, the public hearing is usually supported by your legal team. So the legal team that helped you with your levy resolutions would put together a hearing script so that we make sure we shared all the legal requirements in that meeting. And then you open it up for each person to testify and we'd be happy to give a presentation on the interest costs, the, the yields, the. Anything that would be helpful.
Okay, excellent.
So a lot of information, but hopefully just planting seeds on things that might be helpful and giving you an update on taxes. And there's a lot of really good momentum on outperforming those estimates and things are great. So I appreciate the time on your agenda. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very, very much. It was very interesting.
Is it, do, does any of the board have any questions?
I, I appreciate you coming. I always learn so much when I hear you talk, so.
Thank you.
Uh we know it's a long drive, so we would like to invite you to go ahead and leave. Don't probably get it.
I was actually, she was in Bethel last night, so it was like, it's just up there.
Well, and you come from Spokane, right?
I live in Spokane and I split my duty back and forth. And uh John Gores, if you remember John Gores, uh worked in Seattle, I had Spokane cover. When he retired, I wasn't ready to move to Seattle yet. But we're doing a lot. We, we work in just Washington state. So if I lived here, I'd be flying to Spokane. So I can live in Spokane and fly here and drive in the summer. It's gorgeous. Like the drive here was gorgeous.
Today was a good day.
It was a good day. Yesterday was not a good day.
Are you driving home tonight?
No, I have meetings in um North Bend tomorrow night. So sometimes I link them all together.
Thank you so much for creating space and time and for, and also the one thing about Corey is if you needed, if you ever have a question, he will. We call him, he answers those questions. So thank you so much for being a resource.
And good luck in Olympia.
We need to keep, keep working there.
Well, we look forward to hearing. I'm going to sneak out.
Um that was great. Krista, are you ready to do your reports?
Okay, let's see, we have a little bit on first. Um we've been really, and woman's been kind of fun this year. Um we've been up and down. Um so we kind of started out with a bang and then October went up and we were really excited about that. Well, let's, let's, let's see what happens. So um we have dropped some. Um so we're down about thirteen students from where we started this year. Um but, and so we're averaging right around where we budgeted. So all in all, it's good. Um one thing, one important thing to note is I've been watching um our ALE members climb. Um and when our ALE numbers climb, our, our basic education numbers tend to correlate in the opposite direction. Um and that has an impact on our staffing. Um so it's really important that we're watching those ALE numbers uh because it can impact our um staffing in basic education. So trying to forecast those for next year and um see where we end up. Um as far as budget status goes, um I just provided you with the general skyward report this month. Um I'm working on the forecast slide model a little bit to update it with enforcement and those sorts of things. Um but our expenditures are on pace for the year. Our revenues are slightly behind where we would expect to see them right now. Um but all in all, we're, we're on track um to be within, well, within budget.
Okay, this is going to be a really exciting presentation. I'm so grateful. And the timing is impeccable because uh I think you're going to share some data and some perspective that will really, I think. See that the work that you're doing is paying dividends. So thank you for being here and staying to hear the presentation. So we're going to turn the time over to Sally.
I'm here to talk about our school improvement plans and you'll see uh a bit of our slideshow that. Um our theme tonight is elevation and elation, reaching base camp. And as you know, our, our strategic plan is all about reaching the summit. And so we are halfway through the year. So one might say we have reached base camp. Good learning. Uh and we're here to recognize our strengths tonight as well as our areas of focus. Uh I, I connected our work around our principals work, I should say, and our staff's work around our strategic plan. Um you'll see that our SIP plans really connect to academic success. I numbered the objectives on our plan, objective one and objective two. I'll read all those to you on slide two. Um but basically promoting and prioritizing academic success with rigorous curriculum instruction. And you'll see some of that reflected in our strategic plan goal. Note that um I'm going to be doing an overview of uh the school goals. Um you're going to see some school by school breakdown. We're a little bit of progress updates. Uh and our purpose tonight is really to uh show accountability. Uh we want to provide transparency. This also is represented in one of our pillars. For the board and for the community regarding our commitment to continue, continue to school improvement and student success. Um our, part of our work around strategic, sorry, school improvement plans is to monitor our progress. And to track our effectiveness in the work that we're doing and the goals and those plans. And of course, we want to collaborate. Uh we want to foster open communication between the school district leadership, school administration, our parents. Because it takes all of us to, to reach height, high heights, high elevation with our students. So community embalming is also highlighted as um objective two aligns to the senior community partnerships. With uh those who are supporting us through the mentoring and scholarship being uh funding. Um that has really been a great impact for our students. Our lab and title funds and other intervention funds really are limited. And so this gives more opportunities for kids. And which has impacted our growth that you're going to see tonight. So thank you very much. So when I think about our kids and if you know on slide, I'm going to go back to slide one, Cassie. Because I want to know if anyone recognizes this location. If you're a mountain climber, you might. I'm not right here. This is camp, and slide one is Camp Muir. And then if you go, I'm going to help around, I apologize, Cassie. We know that our kids and also our staff take many climbing routes to success. If you recognize this base camp. Oh, I'm sorry. It's Camp Sherman, which is on the east side. And if you've ever had the opportunity to climb Mount Rainier, you would have traveled through either of these locations um to the summit. And then if you go to slide four, it's not the summit that changes you, but the countless decisions made on the climb itself. And I would say that's the work our principals do every day. Um and this route, do you even want to recognize this route? This is the Liberty Route, which is one of the more dangerous routes of Mount Rainier, if you've ever attempted to climb that one. And let's define. And so I just want to recognize on slide four. The hard work of these people who meet our kids at the door every day and are supporting staff and making a hundred decisions. Throughout each and every day to help create success for our students. Our principals. And then slide five. In our strategic plan, the summit is what drives us, but it's really the climb itself that matters, as a quote. And I, I'm sure you could relate to that. It's the work we do along the way. We can always celebrate and we do have some celebrations tonight when we reach the summit, but it really is all the learning that takes place as we. Uh make that ascent to the top. And you have to always work with teammates. As you look at um slide seven, climbing higher. You know that learning is a journey, not a destination, and we have to count on each other. As you, as noted here, when, when you climb, you have to rope up. And you have to count on the leader of the rope team and also the follower, the last person. And know that the person in front is taking most of the risks. But the person at the end is the one who has to jubilay on if you fall into the crevasse and, and uh go into position and pull you out. And so sometimes our teams are going to position to pull kids out and to help them get back on track and move in the right direction.
You sound like somebody who's summed it about Rainier.
Uh I've attempted a few times, got to thirteen hundred, thirteen thousand feet and had to turn around because we're making safe decisions. Oh yes, I worked at Rainier um as a student, YCC, and then four years as a seasonal ranger. But yeah, it's a great place to be, a lot of lessons learned. Next slide um is, I'm giving you a generalization of our SIP plan goals across all five buildings. All of our buildings have a focus on increasing attendance rates. Um with targeting to, to reach a seventy-five or eighty percent across all schools. Um we have many, many different ways in which principals are enticing. Um our community and students to want to be there and to come to school and increase attendance. From rewards, incentives, um meetings with parents if needed, recognizing classes. Recognizing individuals and just really trying to raise that. And it takes a partner to put our parents to make that happen. Um our second goal is.
And they're not numbered, so I.
Yeah, this one. No, no, the one you were on. Okay. There you go. Sorry, Cassie. The next goal is enhancing ELA growth and enhancing math growth. We want to aim for a ten percent increase and that increase is really focused on the end of the school year. When we look at, when we come back in the fall and look at our SBA results. But we've tracked that and we know that we're using some data systems that really are tightly aligned and that help us with that monitoring. And we'll be talking about that. And then um special education students. And Racy's really going to cover our subgroups tonight as well as MTSF. And we want to strive for a twenty percent increase in, in um the number of special education students meeting state standards. And then our high school has a focus on core subject proficiency. And also working toward ten percent in the core subject areas and increase the ninth grade on-track rate. To eighty-five percent as measured by class passing rates. We're going to do some celebrating around that. to eighty-five percent as measured by class passing rates. We're going to do some celebrating around that. And other things mentioned in these goals. Next slide, Cassie. Uh, so this, I, this is using our, the data you're looking at here is from Panorama. It's a platform that our staff will use. It puts all the kids' data in one place. And, um, so it's used for, um, some of the systems we put into place. Let's see, go.
Uh, we use a lot of the Panorama data for our multi-tier support systems or MTSS with our care teams. So, um, we, we hold our tier one students, look for tier two students who are maybe needing some other interventions. Um, the care team will look at those students, think of ideas and accommodations and ways to meet their academic or behavioral needs. Um, and we, we work those plans that we put in place for six to eight weeks and then look at data again. Uh, MTSS will be the requirement, uh, for all districts to have in place by 2026. So we have really been designing our system and working on it and making tweaks as we go. And I, I will say, um, I think we're seeing a lot of growth and, uh, a lot of improvements by working as a team, uh, with, with all the stakeholders involved. And I think it's been a big positive. Um, and a, a little bit different, uh, we've changed some things of the way they used to be in the past. And really asking teachers and principals to focus on tier one interventions for all students and what that looks like in your classroom. Um, and I think that's been a little bit of a model change. Uh, and then if a student gets to tier three or tier four and, and it's a special education referral. We have a team here, uh, at the district level that, that looks at those referrals and, and making sure that we have our eyes on and oh, did, why did, did we try this? Or was that a research-based accommodation, uh, that you used? Um, so really, really making sure we're being authentic and, and looking at individuals to that.
And so for this slide, I really wanted to touch on one of our goals, which was attendance. Um, we have seen, um, from last year, our total was fifty-nine percent with, um, attendance rate. And that is measured by students meeting, um, or at school. They only miss eighteen days for the year and then they drop into considered to be chronically absent. So fifty-nine percent last year missed less than eighteen days. And already this year we're at sixty-seven percent, which is a great, eight percent increase. And you can also see the colors and nearby school. Um, one, the lower one is the, I'm sorry, this isn't big enough for you to see, but the lower one is last year's data. And the upper one on the left is this year's data. So you'll see that. I want to speak to the academics here because you might wonder why this is different when we look at like I ready data. The academics in this system right now that you're looking at is grades. So you're seeing percentages based on grades. There's calculating to the formula in this system. And the next one. So we like to celebrate, uh, we want to celebrate our K eight growth. Um, mid-year already, um, in ELA district wide, you're seeing an increase from twenty-nine to forty-five percent, uh, students, um, increasing to be not on level to on level in one and a half years' time. And you'll see that we've gone from thirty-five decreasing the yellow, which is what you want to do, decrease yellow and increase green, uh, to thirty percent in the yellow. And then, uh, dropping from, uh, thirty-six percent to twenty-five percent students behind in the red. If you looked at on the right, I don't know if you can see that very well, but maybe if you have a slideshow in front of you, that really is ELA areas that are set. Which include cognitive awareness, phonics, uh, non, um, I'm running double C myself in this slide. Um, high frequency words vocabulary, and then the two areas of comprehension, literature and informational tasks. So if we look at the next slide, you'll see that we're looking at student growth in ELA by building. Um, so from beginning of the year till now, we have like four hundred and sixty students. Already meet grade level standard or above. And this is across the building, across the district. Um, which means they've already met the standards they're supposed to meet by the end of the school year. So when we look at I ready assessment, it's assessing where kids need to be by the end of the year. So we already have that many students already met their, all the learnings this school year. In ELA. And you can see the greens. So there's two left, there's a diagnostic one and then the most recent one by building. You can see how the green has grown and the yellow has shrank and the red has shrank in buildings from beginning of the year till mid-year. So our staff are working really hard to create success for our students. The next slide is math and you're going to see the same layout for math. Of course, we have a little more work to do in math. Um, it is an area of focus too from some of our buildings as well. So you are see, we are making progress, just not as much as we would like. And then, um, you see that also we've increased the green as well. Um, and also shrunk the, it shrunk the group in red that, um, are most behind students. If you look by placement, you can see our kids assess it by placement and those represent the areas of math that kids are assessed in, numbers and operations, algebra. And that's I'm going blank on that one. And then geometry. And then if we go to the next slide, K eight, I ready growth for math. And, um, you'll see four hundred and two students have already met the standards for the end of the year for math. And you can also see this by grade level and how each building has grown in the areas that you see in the trunk and the areas of red. You can see where we can really celebrate our student growth. Um, you'll see the kids have jumped, not just, some buildings have jumped from red to green in six months' time. It's not really indicated here because I'm not sharing with you individual student data, but know that that's happening too.
Nice. Um, ask a question, something that was brought to my attention. At the high school was the state is testing our kids in tenth grade for geogra- or geometry, when typically they're not even in the class until eleventh grade. So they're being tested and held accountable for information that they haven't even learned yet. And so that is also reflected perhaps in some of this slower day off.
Yes, we have that, and that is most grade levels where geometry is usually in most frictons at the end of the school year. And we test, you know, beginning in May. So yes, so teachers are having to like pull some of that geometry in early, even though they might not see through where they want to be. So, and in high school, it's a different story because the whole, whole year is geometry.
Right.
So, um, but they're still tested on that before they have geometry.
And my understanding is the state changed the testing to earlier because they wanted students to have more time to catch up. But the problem with the thinking is that they still haven't had the class to really acknowledge their learning. So it's this constant change of testing. I don't know.
Which states, because it's reflected.
It's reflected, but there's a whole story behind it that you don't always have all the information around, so.
Very true.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about data for our subgroups that we have identified in our SIP plans. First being our Hispanic students and the second being our students who receive special education services. So on, um, the first slide is our ELA I ready scores for Hispanic students. And as you see, from diagnostic one to diagnostic two, uh, we've had a lot of growth. Especially students moving to the mid or above grade level to that green area. So it is very exciting, uh, to have for our, our students who, um, we knew we needed to put a big focus on this year. Um, I attribute a lot to that is, um, making sure all of our students have multilingual plans that, that qualify. Uh, training our teachers on those plans and making sure they're aware of, of what's needed, uh, for that growth. So, um, very exciting for that. Um, the next is by building and I'm going to hand out this as well. It's the same information. It's just a little bit easier to see and read. On, on the next slide. So you can see by building. Um, our students in each building are, are moving to the green. Um, at Warehouser, there are no longer students who are testing three or more years behind. Uh, that's a, that's a great improvement. Great job, um, to that staff. And the same as, um, at Eatonville Elementary as well. So, um, no longer are there students testing that three years behind themselves. Um, great movement on, on, in that area in ELA. Um, moving forward, a focus that we'll have, especially with our multilingual learners is making sure, uh, we're working on vocabulary, supporting, uh, the, the core curriculum vocabulary that's being taught in hopes to improve that communication score. So that will be a focus that Mr. Yandel works on when he's working with our students. And next is our math, I ready scores, the next slide. Thank you. Uh, you will see again, uh, overall improvement, um, with our Hispanic and Latino students. Um, students, you know, we moved from zero to eight percent now at our above three level. So, um, more students to the yellow area there and not as many in the red. So, um, some really great growth in math. And the next slide, by building. Um, CCA and Eatonville Elementary and Warehouser overall improvement. Um, and we're seeing overall growth at the elementary as well. So students, the red is shrinking and bigger yellow and, and some more green there as well. So um, an area of focus that we'll focus on with our multilingual learners is, um, really looking, when you look at the data, our subgroup that we need is algebra and algebraic thinking. So that is a big component that we need to focus on in all buildings. And that's the part. Then next is our ELA I ready scores for students receiving special education services. Um, we, we've really honed in on our curriculum in the special ed department. Uh, we're not using as such a wide range of kind of old outdated curriculum. We've really been focusing on using, um, aligning our systems with our, with gen ed and using I ready and, and supplementing. And I think that we've seen quite a bit of growth because of that, uh, really focusing in on, on that. I know there are still kids, students in the red, uh, but we did see more kids moving on to grade level. And I'll show you on the next slide. This is my probably twelfth year of using I ready. Um, so I've sent in a lot of trainers and worked with a lot of trainers. And in the special ed setting, students who receive services are typically two and a half years or more behind. Um, so really an important thing to look at is that stretch growth for special ed students. So forty-two percent of our students receiving special ed services have made a year's gain already. So they've met their stretch growth. So, um, that, that is a great improvement, big improvement. The next, uh, slides are our math I ready scores. Again, we're seeing overall improvement. And by building as well, we see some improvement. And our stretch growth is forty-two percent. So forty-two percent of our students have met stretch growth this year. So, um, sounds a big, big improvement. Um, I think a focus for, uh, our special ed teachers and we're working with principals, which is, you can continue really honing in on this curriculum and not using so much outside curriculum. So I think that's a big, I mean, you're pulling from too many tools. You're not being authentic and, and you're not getting that time. And so.
Well, it's good to have all the schools aligned.
Yes, yes, we've done, we've worked really hard at aligning all of our tools.
You don't believe you're working or not, if you don't.
Yes.
Um, just one quick question for Rosie. Do we know, and just because I'm a competitive individual. Um, not that it matters versus, um, where our kids are as far as the numbers we have over certain, uh, but do we know with other districts or other really in the across state in I ready? That are, we are growing similar to them? I mean, do we, do we know if we're, if we're, uh, being as successful as our, our, kind of as a cohort around the state and that growth? I mean, is that even possible to know?
Haven't looked at mid-year, but I could ask that. But in the fall, when I presented, it did show that we were right in the ballpark or a little above in some areas.
I'm curious to know. I mean, overall, long-term, like, that, you know, we're, I would assume we're naturally going to grow, you know, just because of what all the work together they're doing. And I'm just curious as to i- if somebody else is growing at X rate, you know, what are they doing differently? What, you know, like you're, thank you.
And I ready provides that you can compare to data to other.
Say, if we were to take the SBA today, this harder balance today, where our kids would test and if we keep making the same gains where they would land at the end of this school year as well. I know it's a new component this year. It's very.
Great.
And we can reach out to other districts and find out.
Yeah.
Are I ready, the company, the time will prepare.
I love, I love your idea. If somebody's killing it, what's like.
Especially in our similar size, our similar demographic, financial base, everything else. That's, you know, you can't compare us to you both. That's not what I mean. What is? You know, you know.
And I think, I think the stretch growth for special education students is, uh, I mean, that, that's right on track. That's, that's right where we want to. So I'm very happy with that. And I'm very happy, uh, for principals and teachers being patient while we make those adjustments to, to how we're using.
Hopefully they're feeling, um, successful, like they're seeing the, the teachers are doing the hard work, but they're also seeing that there's growth. And that helps encourage them to continue on and being patient.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what you're seeing here and run a spoke a little bit about SBA just a few minutes ago. Um, our students have opportunities. This, this is data, not necessarily looking, you're not looking at this as growth data, but these are the IAB. Um, which is, um, SBA assessments along the way that our students can take. To see how they're doing. And so our teachers are using this, putting on the teacher in different ways. They're using it as a pre-test. They're using it as a post-test. They're using it as a teaching tool. Um, and it helps for student reflection as well. And so we'll see teachers use that to analyze trends and scores over time to check how students are progressing on specific skill areas. And, and also look at previous performance without IBAs and sometimes IABs and sometimes to target intervention or justice instruction. So I just put up data just to give you a feel. Recently, we have tested, as you can see, these are different grade levels. Where you can see how kids fill out. And remember, this is not the comprehensive test. This might be one area. Um, there's IABs and there's F IABs and one has, will have a more limited scope of, um, standards that it's evaluating. And the other's a little larger, but neither of them are comprehensive.
So what you're telling me is they've literally taken the state interim releases and they're part of, they're on, they're doing them now.
That's been around for a while.
But I do not.
Oh, okay.
New wrinkle on my brain. That's awesome. Or we even have access to them. I don't know. That's awesome. So, you know, that's great.
So our schools have access grades three to twelve. Um, I don't, we don't, I don't think we've put our littles through it yet, uh, because we're already assessing them with I ready. Have that option and you'll see that happen as we get closer to, in the elementary schools, as we get closer to the testing window. To give kids practice on signing on and doing the practice, what we call, you can call practice tests, for them to get used to the system. Um, but here you're seeing our middle and, um, middle and high school, some of the testing done. We are putting into practice going forward next year. Come, it'll be part of our common assessments. That everybody grades three through twelve will do one math, one ELA. Each year, so that they, uh, minimum we give students the opportunity to practice, be, on and trying that out. So you'll see, um, our kids are falling either on or approaching. In this case, it's called approaching on grade level and then red is, um, not yet approaching. And which subject areas, you can see that we tested here, teachers have tested geometry, special expressions and equations. Um, just to give you a feel, uh, uh, um, different grade levels. And
Go ahead. No, go for it.
Um, in regards to our Hispanic students and students receiving special education services at the high school, we've implemented grade checks on a monthly basis. So, um, we're able to have more contact. Um, our MLL coordinator, uh, in his schedule has a time where he can pull students who are struggling or, or maybe have missing assignments and work with them a little more closely. Um, we've increased accommodations at IAPs, um, and also our multilingual plans. And I'm also asking that our, our Hispanic students and special education students participate in the IAPs as well. So they're getting that practice and practicing their combinations that are.
And we'll move to the next slide. This is more of the, uh, this is, so we were doing math. This is more math assessments. Um, the previous one had smaller groups. I thought I pulled this one as well to see. Um, teachers can use these as frequently as they want. I, I should have brought and I can share. I, I should have brought and I can share with you the list of all the assessments in this system. And these are basically, you can call them free SBAs, so they get opportunities to test and reteach or expectancy success can help drive instruction for the final assessment. And here again, we're looking at math. And then on this one, we're looking at ELA and see a combination of a specific area. ELA, so you'll see revision and research. One thing I I'm going to miss, probably misquote Alex Christian said, he was sharing, we were talking about data last week, and there's one area and one state, it's. I'll get back to you on which area, but anyway, only five percent of the students in the state met that on the SBA. So he's asking for exemplars and how can we help our students do better as well? We did have some students meet it in Eatonville, but just like, wow, what a high scale for our kids to reach in that. And so we're just looking, investigating that as well. So again, know that these are not growth scores. These are first time through, where kids are at. It could be after teaching the unit, it could be before, and it could be whole group. So I know our middle school teachers talk about at times, a couple of them want to walk it, walk kids through it as a whole class. I would say the one downfall about SBAs that has been echoed by our teachers is that we don't do the long form and so we don't get the good information we used to get about performance and why and where kids are at that we used to get. And the state's not planning to shift that to the United States, the short form, which happened with taking COVID, we're doing short form and they're not planning to go back at this time. So what's going well? Go to the next slide. These are what, these are comments from principals about what's going well when they reflect on their sit plan with their staff. So CCA has the opportunity to do win time in their school, what I need. So they really have an almost a two intervention time model in their building, which is great for a building that has a free and reduced lunch rate of sixty four percent, higher needs. Again, that's part of the which route you're going to take and different routes help get all of our kids to the top. And they have come with different needs. And so win time offers that opportunity to really work on those for kids who might have need extra support. And also, they also have the tutoring program there to the, just having an impact as well. So commenting that moving to teacher supported model has been really helpful. In the past, our intervention, lap and title programs were kind of up to parish to, to manage, not that they don't do great work, but without some of the guidance of a classroom teacher, instructionally, that has been difficult. So we did stipend a teacher to really help build that model at home, your customers, we only have interest and going to be expanding that at Warehouser and possibly be yes, as soon as we can. So just because if you're really looking at data and you're, and our, all our schools can speak to this, when we look at data, we want to have flexible grouping. We need someone who can analyze that data and then determine how we're going to move kids, give them what they need at that time and not stay in the same stagnant group all year. So if I'm meeting the standards on multiplication and that's the group I'm in, we need to be able to move kids. And so I Ready gives us that data to move kids around those domains within math and reading. And we need someone with expertise to do that. And each building, so Wes also has done a great job of including those with disabilities, according to Ms. Lynn who's here tonight. All students, including those with disabilities, are fully included in core curriculum instruction. I'm guessing that that has not been occurring and actually students on IAPs are supposed to have core instruction every day. So with, and they get to be included in the general education classrooms. Interventions and tutoring programs are supported, are doing a great job of supporting their struggling students. She's using a debt, what's gone well is her data driven approach ensures that students receive personalized support, leading to noticeable growth in academic achievement. Do you think you want to add that?
No.
EHS is really celebrating their, they're also, well, Mr. Brown already spoke to the newspaper article and the great work that's happening at the high school with the tutoring program and there's lab support there as well, but it's had an impact on ninth grade on track outcomes for students, surpassing their goal with a rate of ninety point five percent of students in ninth grade are on track. That means they're not failing, ninety percent, ninety point five percent are not failing a class by the end of first semester. But that is really exciting and definitely a celebration. Also, Amy is celebrating the learning she's providing for teachers centered around the developmental relationships framework, which is strengthen, strengthens student connections and helps kids engage in learning, engage in strong connections with their teachers. EES really has appreciated the implementation of a core magnetic reading curriculum. Principal Bertlin feels it's been well received and promoted, also the use of I Ready. He appreciates the alignment with the interventions. Our intervention materials are aligned to the core curriculum, which is aligned to the assessment and the toolkit. And so he's very, his staff are very appreciative of that and have resulted in good growth for students. And then EMS, seeing academics improving, using the, looking at I Reading growth. They are also really been focused on attendance, incentives, and are adding in some Friday boost celebrations for students as well. That is, that has helped keep kids coming to school. So with any great work, we never gotten, when we're working with students, we always have more, more to do. And so our principals are focusing on the youth areas. Although EES is seeing growth in math, and I've heard this across our buildings and in different committees with teachers that are doing some Frankenstein-ing of math, our Ureca math curriculum is kind of outdated at this point. I think it's been around, we were trying to figure that out thirteen years, fourteen years.
Already? Oh, my goodness. Yes. Like a not too long ago.
And so principals echo, they would like to see something aligned to interventions. We also need to look at math interventions as well across the district a little more closely, but also possibly looking at the cohesiveness between interventions and wanting to take a look at possibly math curriculum. CCA, one of their primary challenges have, have been the impact of staff absences. And we have that probably across the district. Many of these are echoed across the building. When staff are absent, we're pulling our interviewing staff to cover, so then kids aren't necessarily getting intervention time when we're pulling staff to help other places when we're short in buildings. So then kids aren't, don't have anyone to lead groups. So we're, to address this, one solution would be to have a larger pool of substitutes and then having them trained in intervention materials. So when we do have subs, they can just jump in and do the work that's needed instead of not sure how to use materials.
When would you do that training? Would it be at the beginning of the year, when you're doing some of the other training? When you train subs?
We have to figure that out. I guess it would make sense to do it before they start, but as we add new subs all year.
Yeah.
We may have to do some, go in, maybe figure out a model where they can go in there, where it is happening as part of training, instead of having it be formal.
Or do a video, video module. I'm down on you, that's all right.
So also, so yeah, they're looking also at CCA about effective interventions in the area of math, sub piece, and also advocating for the new math curriculum and staff. They also want to use the magnetic as my ready math, not magnetic, sorry, I Ready.
And we're not using any of the I Ready math at this time.
We're using the toolkit supplemental lessons that come when kids don't, are struggling with the math app, but no, we don't use the math curriculum in that program. So there are other options out that we've heard, I've heard other teachers speak to Ureca too, so as well as interest. So there's interest that we're wanting to make a difference. Wes, a key areas that we're on achieving their six goals is enhancing intervention support for students to require additional academic behavior and social emotional assistance, as noted in the MTSS process. They're looking to have a dedicated intervention specialist teacher, that's someone who do that work outside their teaching day, usually paid for, stipend, to provide coordination of interventions, monitoring of progress, supporting paras with instruction, instructional materials, how to teach those materials as well.
So, and that, that's what is happening right now in CCA?
Yes.
Okay, so looking for the same. Right, got it.
It's been following to the principals at EES and Wes, and it's just become. Because it just needs a lot of focus and a lot of attention. EHS, another area of focus is shifting the culture around school attendance. I think that's echoed in all of our buildings that one of the struggle is the, you know, parents value about having their kids at school. I mean, we want our kids home when they're sick, but there's more of a, what would you say, a more. Not as lackadaisical, not as a, not a driven thing to have kids. We kind of really working with that culture about parents not seeing it as important, I guess, since Moses, after seeing it, having kids at home and seeing what that can look like. So we really want to shift that focus around attendance and they're working with families to do that. Again, our schools are trying to get incentives as well, but looking especially at, focusing on the chronically absent students, those who are just eighteen days old.
That has to be that parents see that there's meaningful instruction happening when their child is at school, sort of that value. And the other part of it is, I think, parents are kind of pushing up against, schools aren't going to tell me what to do with my kids. And so I think that that's an issue that it needs to be a broader conversation and, and I've had community members say that the more we open up our schools for parents to, to be a part of their child's education, I think that that will be really helpful. So I think we have, there's lots of things that we can do on that front to help regain trust and interaction with parents and families.
We need to put some of those ideas on the table, explore that. It's true. EMS and other buildings, student time and I Ready. We're talking also about the personalized instruction and working on maybe, we know that if kids spend the time, which is fifteen minutes, three times a week, they're more likely going to hit that marker of annual typical growth or stretch growth, which means more kids would be on level. So really working on increasing that time on task and focus. Attendance efforts also during the high illness rates, that was a concern in the last month. We had some big drops at EES, EMS, with a lot of people out for quite a long time. And then they want to work on problem solving, the students, the number of students behind two to three years when we look at I Ready data and addressing the needs and struggling with addressing the needs with limited resources. And then I just want to end with tying it back to our vision statement and our plan together with our community, our families and community. We appreciate our principals and the work they're doing and we really need to continue to work to build our togetherness with our community because it takes all of us to educate our kids.
Thank you so much. Any, anybody have any questions? Do you have any questions? You know, it was a lot. It is really, thank you so much for bringing the data, not just to us, but to our community so that we can have thoughtful conversations and ask hard questions and also be accountable. So appreciate that very much. Okay. The tide has turned and this is running a late meeting, so I'm going to do a really short legislative update. It's attached to our board minutes. If you want to see all of the policies that are out there, what's important to know is last Friday was the cutoff date. If the bill didn't make it through their policy committee, it's dead. So, you know, at any given time, there was like sixteen hundred bills out there. So now they're going to their appropriations or ways of means, the way that they can be funded, have to go through those committees if they have any kind of a fiscal note and then they'll make it onto the floor. But what I really want to focus today on the legislative update is what is going to impact us personally as a school district. And that is our new public lands commissioner has put a hold on twenty-three sales, timber sales that have been put through the process and are ready to go. They've just been stopped for about six months. And this is important to us because one, Eatonville community has a lot of DNR land and we have a lot of timberland and therefore we get less property taxes because we have more timberland and the idea is that the excise tax from those sales will come back and benefit our community. One of those sales, the Railroad Creek sale will impact our school district, minimum of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, but up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we will be, and this will bring us to our new business item, we are going to be passing or I would like to propose a resolution to the board that would state that as a board, we would encourage the commissioner of public lands and the DNR board to finalize those timber sales and then hopefully express to them the concern that we have and how it impacts small rural, particularly timber towns like Eatonville. So I would encourage all of our community to reach out to DNR. The April is when they will be making the decision to finalize those sales or not. So anytime a community member, and again, I would imagine that this also impacts the logging industry and the timber industry in our community. So anyone who's willing to reach out to DNR and say, we really would encourage you to continue with the sale of these, the timber, that would be wonderful. It's, they've met all environmental standards, they're all ready to go. As a matter of fact, this Railroad Creek timber sale would also help replace a culvert that would help with sand restoration. So this is an environmentally conscious decision as well, has met all those standards. So we're looking for your support in that. And with that, I would consider approval of the board resolution seven forty-seven that we are going to encourage Department of Natural Resources to continue with the timber sales. And I would consider a motion and we can open for discussion. So. Second, okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion around this resolution? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we will be sending that resolution on not only to the Department of Natural Resources, but also to our legislative representatives and senator as well as Pierce County Council because this money also goes to our fire services and junior taxing authorities. So Pierce County is impacted. It's not just schools. There's a lot of people in Pierce County who will be impacted by this. All right, consider approval of board resolution seven forty-eight, Sourcewell Cooperative. Again, Krista, do you want to address us or do?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So I just discovered that we actually are a Sourcewell member, but we never had a resolution, which we're required to do so. So I thought, since we are navigating this new project, track and field with Sourcewell, now would be a good time to put forward a resolution. So I'm asking for your approval to do business with Sourcewell in our local.
Great, thank you. And with consideration for approval, motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Right, carrying in, all in favor? Hi. Motion carries. Consider approval of capital outlay for HVAC optimization, Krista?
Yeah, so this is just to touch back on the grant that we received for Eatonville High School, HVAC optimization and lighting replacement. The total project costs is about one point five million. That'll be in capital outlay, of which one million we will receive back from the Department of Commerce through the grant. So we just need the approval to move forward with this purchase for capital outlay for Department of Commerce and EES.
That being said, I would consider approval of capital outlay for HVAC. Motion. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would like to say thank you to Krista for your hard work in getting this grant. Grants are a lot of work and continue to be. So thank you so much for your time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval to allow superintendent to negotiate the stadium contract with all three southern bleachers through our cooperative agreement with PCDA. Go back one.
Back one.
Superintendent, consider approval of capital facilities plan. I have too many checks on my sheet. Krista?
So a while back, we, the school board approved a capital facilities plan, which basically outlines how much space we need according to our growth and class size and programs. And we put forth this plan and filed it with Pierce County so that we could collect impact fees, which we currently collect from rural Pierce County. However, in our current capital facilities plan, there's no provisions in there to be able to spend those impact fees on the track and field. So I reached out to Doug Nichols with. The track and field. So I reached out to Doug Nichols, Nichols Consulting, who wrote the plan. Cause there's a lot of tricky formulas in there. And he revised it so that to include the track and field. So we do have that flexibility to use the impact fees. On the track and field with the approval of this amended plan.
Excellent. And that is because that is academic space. We are, our students use that as a learning space. So.
Yes.
Alright, wonderful. I would consider a motion to approve the capital amended capital facilities.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Or opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to consider approval to allow superintendent to negotiate the stadium contract with all play Southern Bleachers through our cooperative agreement with K C D A. It's pretty straightforward, same thing that we've done in the past. This gives our superintendent the ability to continue with that. So I would consider a motion for approval. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just want to be clear to the community that this is just the ability for him to negotiate a contract. It's not signing, it's nothing else, correct?
We are not signing the contract.
Making sure it's. Being able to talk about it.
Yes. Negotiate and make sure that it fits within the budget that we have set forward. Yes. But until we can negotiate to find out what's out there to offer, we can't.
We don't even know.
We don't know that will fit into our budget. Thank you for your clarification. Appreciate that. Any other questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, this is really exciting and we're grateful to have the community members here with us. Consider approval of the Greater Eatonville Community Foundation fundraising initiative. Allowing the G E C F to fundraise for Eatonville Community Track and Field Project. Mayor, you're here. Would you like to say anything? He's also the chair of that committee.
Yeah, we have started a new foundation in Eatonville. We recognized, actually it started at the school level because we knew that the Seahawks had contributed some dollars. To Yelm for some of their stadium issues. And when we started looking into that, we realized rather quickly that they can't. Donate money directly to the school. It has to go through a foundation, some kind of a nonprofit. So. We jumped in and it was thanks to Rhonda and Bev and Betty here. We've been talking about this for two years, more than two years. And we finally pulled the trigger on it and we are in play. We have a meeting tomorrow at the Millhouse. At seven to kind of introduce. The foundation and two of the projects that we're going to jump on right away is one. We know that there's a little bit of a shortage on the stadium, the new stadium. So. We're kind of taking it on to try to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for some of the ADA improvements and some of those issues. And we also know there's some issues wrapped around the band and some instrument needs that they have. That aren't currently being satisfied. And so that's the second project that we're currently taking on. So it's a great foundation. We've got about thirteen trustees currently. And we're just excited about the whole thing and we're excited about helping the school get the funds they need to get the stadium. Where we want the stadium to be rather than doing perhaps a stadium that isn't quite what we want. And so. Yeah, we're looking for support for all of that and we appreciate the school district allowing us to jump in and assist.
Right. And just as a little plug and maybe a little advertising, the mechanism for that would be the naming rights. For a seat in the stadium so that far and wide, we'd love all community members to have the opportunity. To sponsor a place. They don't get to reserve it. It's not theirs forever, but their name can be put on a placard. And that that will be, they will be sponsoring that seat for our stadium. So we're really excited. Thank you so much for the generosity of your time. And the hard work. And again, once again, the community focus that you have in putting kids first, we just really appreciate that. So that being said, I would consider a motion to approve the fundraising initiative. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. We got a lot of good stuff going on here today. You feel like an auctioneer. Consider approval of replacement of E H S baseball scoreboard. And Brandon's not here, but Krista, but you know something about this.
Yeah, so some of our scoreboards are starting to fail. This is one of them. It's reached the end of its useful life. The. I don't know, the largest windstorm we've had in how many years came through a few months ago. Knocked it over and just put the final nail in that coffin on that, on that scoreboard. So we're asking for approval. To, for this capital outlet. And I would expect to see more of them soon.
Yeah, and honestly, it's getting to the point where it's more expensive to repair than it is just to replace. And so. Even when you repair it, you can go back and do another repairs.
Are we required to have more than one bid? Cause I'm only looking at one.
Oh, I believe this one was actually, oh, this was a, no, this wasn't the weird one. The weird one's coming up. This one went through, was this one for the co-op?
From Tech Talks.
Yeah, but I thought that was through the co-op.
So if we purchase through the cooperative, then they do all of the bidding for us. So.
But you could still do an approval of replacement. We need to go back and make sure we die as the project is, this is an approval just to replace it.
That's just that. I know that they have been doing some research as far as vendors and pricing. So I know they have some of that. I don't, yeah, I don't see that this is.
But again, this could be to approve the replacement. We don't have to do the contract at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, if we're using state funds over a certain dollar, we do have to have three quotes. It's just that we like to do three quotes because it's good practice. Just as, you know, when we go through co-op, sometimes those sometimes aren't always the best deal. Sometimes like our food service van, for example, we could have gone through a co-op, but it was cheaper to get something off the lock. So. So that's one thing that I've noticed with Brandon that he's very vigilant about getting the best price. And sometimes that takes a little bit longer, but we, yeah, it's definitely he's after the best price. So, but we can do some further looking into that.
Okay, so do we need to approve the replacement without approving? The actual contract, okay? Which is exactly what this item G says, consider approval of replacement. So I will. I would look for a motion to approve the replacement of the E H S baseball scoreboard. Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure we're voting to replace it and I just want to make sure that we're getting the good values for replacing. So I'd like to see more than one quote or. Whatever, make sure it's going through our source well or whatever. So.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll follow up with that.
Excellent. All in favor? Aye, I'm opposed. Motion carries. Consider approval of replacement landings and stair purchase for Eatonville Middle School Portables.
So this is the, the one that's a little bit different. It's actually cheaper to not go through a co-op. We ended up getting a quote from somebody and we were misquoted. So we're ending up getting a really good deal on this one. Like I said, going through the co-op would be a lot more. So this is just to replace the landings and stairs. Four of the middle school portables, which Tracy's probably familiar with, they're patched together with plywood and. Are definitely a hazard that needs to be taken care of right away. So just replacing what's there. And this is definitely the best deal without a doubt that, that we can get. So.
Alright, I reconsider motion for approval. And it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of independent contract for physical therapy.
Yes, so this is the contract for our physical therapist, Spryett. We are writing the contract from March, I believe it says ninth, seventh, to the end of the school year. Simply because we want to, I want all contracts on the same start and stop time. So beginning of school year to end. So. That is the reason why it's just for the next few months.
I would consider Russian for approval. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Sorry, didn't ask you to keep on the discussion. Alright, consider approval of the, and I'm going to do these together. We're going to do J M K together. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year calendars. Consider a motion for approval. Any discussion on either of those? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of procedure twenty-three twenty, field trips and excursions, updated wording and list. And Cassie? Did you want to address this?
Yeah, so typically every three years, we review the, just the list of the reoccurring. Overnight field trips that typically are athletic. And so. It's just, we go to the high school and the athletic director and get their list for what's in the pipeline and throw it on here. And we're going to start moving towards reviewing it annually, but because we're so far in the year, we're gonna. Let it go for next year as well and then start with that annual review. But this is just a list that Amy and Gavin had put together of what's in the pipeline. We also wanted to not just have it be athletic. So we included academics. So when our chess club and our knowledge pool are going to state every year, it's just an automatic approval for them. They don't have to go through the whole process every year.
Can I ask an interesting question?
Maybe.
Why, why is this interesting policy? We list out each individual place they go. Oh, I see. I am going to shut up.
And it's, and we don't often. Don't typically approve procedures. It's usually just policy, but because these are overnight travels for students. We want to make sure that the board and that they have the legal and funds that have permission to travel.
It says procedure right there.
Alright, so I would consider approval of this procedure. So.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further, just wait. Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, so then we have a host of first readings and I would like to block these together unless. Someone here would like to pull one out for further discussion.
We're just reading tonight, right?
Yeah, just the first reading. I read through them and I didn't see anything. Sally, did you have anything specific you wanted to report out on any of these?
I think in twenty. Twenty twenty-two. Around digital resources, I think. We have struggled by some wear and use in curriculum adoption. So we're just finding that a little more in here and then use of internet safety. Just updating some of the language. And cleaning itself a little bit. So around internet use as well and making sure we also include language about. You know, we provide filters. We can't always guarantee because students are live.
Have cell phones and can do around data and such. So.
Can you speak at all to, in general, so the community knows everybody else, you're like, we're usually, you get wording or updating these. Can you speak to that?
So anything else that anybody would like to address or questions prior to us? Okay, alright, then I would consider a motion for items M, N, O, and P as a first reading for said policies. A motion. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Jay?
Yeah, I'm going to make it real brief. I really appreciate everybody hanging in there. I just wanted to begin first by saying that, you know. You can see the amount of work and the effort that's put in to make our district run so smoothly and to have the success. That we're currently having. It's a really great trajectory we're on right now. Likewise, as a board members, you're very involved. Really appreciate that and the way that you are informing our instruction as such. I wanted to start with Bonnie and Bonnie's here, the husband and to get, and I wanted to have her just speak a little bit about where we're at with transportation, maybe celebrate. Couple of the things we talked about.
So a positive note for trash taking, which was very nice to have for the last year. So we have to date not had to cancel any routes for this entire school year and most, and half of that. I'm hoping that that has a very positive effect on our attendance rates and it continues that way. Another positive note is that when we input our information to the STARS program, which is our funding program through O S B I. Last year, we were. Last year, our funding amount that was sent to us after our report. Total was one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty cents. This year with the increase of students on buses, because we don't have any cancellations. Our increase is, we increased it by two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one and ninety cents. So. The student team.
Please pass along our gratitude.
Yes, absolutely. And to you. We know, we know how hard you work.
Yeah, I, I do remember the first days, first school days as superintendent, evidently nine out of twenty routes. I might have just moved down to go over on my desk and focused one hundred percent on, on what we can do and. I want to say thanks to the community also that stepped up, but also the great leadership and the hard work putting you and your team and. So now we're looked at on the opposite. Now we were, we were actually featured with Co-Comma News from Getting It Right. And so all of a sudden now the districts are contacting us to say, how are you getting it right? How are you not having some routes? How are you, how are you recruiting, retaining? You know, your, your staff. And so I just wanted, I can't think it up. So and again, on that same note. As we think about our staff, we have about two hundred and eighty staff and we have six here that are just really, really hard workers. And but that, that same goes for all our staff. We have a lot of, we have, there's a lot of energy right now. There's a lot of optimism. There's a lot. That we're moving forward on that just, it just feels like as a school district, new leadership. I went for the leadership of so many hardworking people that we are really headed in the right direction and the great, you know, great deserves for yet. So for instance, on our, on the dispatch, you see. The first two pages are taken up by Eatonville students. So here's Bailey's, I mentioned, and I'm here. Good luck on Friday night. State, guys, I should make state second year in a row and looking forward to that. We have one of our students who's going on to play, this is Brody Thirty Anchor going on to crack a missing out on a major college who'll be playing baseball at the next level. That's a great thing. And then on the next page was, as I mentioned, Eatonville High School exceeding their ninth grade academic success record. They, they had seven, they had seventy-nine point eight percent of their. Ninth graders pass all their classes. Then it, then they set a goal for eighty-five and they're already at ninety point five and now it's higher because now we have. Between one and two more students. So now it's even a little higher than ninety percent. And again, the recruiting program is helping to, to, to make that all possible. So just want to say, you know. This is a very supportive community and our schools mean a lot. Our students mean everything to us and. And there are just so many people who are working on that. We have, and we, we set two primary goals. One was a means to an end and the other one is the end. So the means to the end is that we increase our attendance. We're not where, we're not, still not where we want to be. But we're happy to announce that again, as Sally mentioned, eight percent increase in attendance between last school year and where we are now. So we're headed again in the right trajectory and we appreciate the parents and those who are supporting that and we'll continue to work that pretty hard. As far as the academic success goes, all of our schools are showing, you know, academic success. Off times now, we're getting a whole, a whole year's worth of growth in a half a year. And we'll be high diving a little bit more of that on, in social media. As we mentioned earlier, we, we promised in this capital projects levy a track and a field. And we are feeling very good about where that's at and we're on track, pun intended, to complete that as hoped. But the other part is, is that thanks to some hard work for some people and also a lot of, a lot of. But the other part is, is that thanks to some hard work for some people and also a lot of uh, a lot of support, uh including some of whom are in this room that um and and legislators and others, that we're getting dangerously close to being able to also get a stadium and let it be clear again that we promised a track and a field. We did not promise a stadium. Um, and so if that happens, that's going to be primarily from outside money, not from taxpayers. And so that's, that would be a great uh boon to our community if we're able to pull that off. And we're getting closer. So we appreciate those who are stepping up to try to make the last um efforts to to accomplish that, to have a safe ADA accessible, um, uh, you know, uh playing uh stadium. But it was, and so we'll, we'll um, we'll keep being fiscally responsible, but we're also going to stretch and um and we're gonna, we're gonna have it happen. So, um, yeah, with that then, we also took a team to the AI Summit. What was to spit uh was particularly uh, I guess wonderful about that was we have Travis right here who led that state level. And we were able to take a team. We want to make sure that we utilize all the tools, what we possibly can to make sure every student is successful. And artificial intelligence is another way that, or an additional way that we can make sure that all of our students learn at the highest levels possible. We don't want it to happen to us. We don't, we don't like to ever be on the, on on the receiving end. We want to be on the proactive end to make sure that we know what is, what it's about and how to best utilize it for the betterment of all. And so it was great to have a team who are now training our staff and so that we're informed and so our students are not disadvantaged when they leave our community and go to the next level. So very grateful for for that. Um, with that, I guess I just want to say that uh I I continue to appreciate the hard work of all of our staff members and your leadership. And uh with that, uh, thank you very much and and onward and upward and continue also.
Thank you. All right, or comments?
Um, well, I just want to um, I'm sorry, I'm paying, yeah, thanking the community. Thank you guys for all that you do. Um, and just, we have a vast community that are always like reaching out. And I I love the community that supports and uplifts and watches what we're doing and paying attention and just they have stake and everything. So just, I I appreciate that. Um, yeah, congrats to everybody that went to state last week. Like that was, that was exciting to watch basketball and wrestling and and just support the students that were just excited and have worked so hard. Um, and uh, so this week on Monday uh was the day that um kids could start signing up for Pierce County or Pierce County Skill Center. So this, just to let everybody know that it is the time to sign up now if your kids are interested. So um, fill out the application. Um, and I'm just proud of our attendance. That's huge. So all the schools have, you know, uh growth. Um, it's making a difference. And thank you, Sally, Gracie and Krista. And um, I I'm just happy to see measurable growth and and just that, you know, we, we have the tools that we can see that and, you know, that we finally got in the right curriculum that we can, we can actually know what's going on.
So thank you so much.
As I said, thank you, you too. Um, it's nice to have a foundation to build from and see what those building blocks are going to do over the next few years. You know, any single points never enough. It's going to be great to see the SBA this year, but then what's that go? Does it go for it? It's just awesome. Thank you. It was really neat to see. Last thing I would say, I had a benefit to visit a school. Um, I won't mention the name. It wasn't in the state anyway, but it was a forty-five hundred student high school. Um, and our AI travels, everything else. And coming back to see our high school and our size, you guys should be very lucky. Uh, you should, I I I mean, I don't know how to explain this enough, but you walk down the hallways and you see the disenfranchised number of kids. Uh, I don't know, it's a city. It's larger than our town or twice the size of the population. And thank you, uh, Ruby for bringing this one. It says students say that's a middle school, but do you have a trusted adult or guardian that you can talk to? And we've been ninety-five point two percent of our students said yes, without being solicited by an adult to say that or anything else. That that's, that's awesome. Um, because all the other things, whenever you can, you're not going to stop bullying with teenagers. I don't mean to be disrespectful. You're not. You can make it easier. You can make it better. You can make it um less. But having them have an adult to talk to, and that's why this town is so deep in this size district, because seeing that size high school, I was sad for every kid there. So that's all. Thank you for bringing that. That's awesome.
Great perspective. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I echo what everybody else has said. And also, mine is a thing. Um, to um, basically, Ruby, thank you so much for what you do to help other students. Not just you individually, but the kind of things that you help put together and that you work with and to help other students to to excel, to feel good about themselves, to know that they have a place at Eatonville High School. And I know you two are amazing leaders and I know there are men who will help you out there. And I just wanted to say thank you and to spread.
Thank you. You're definitely blessed with awesome student representatives. We are so grateful for you. Um, we are also blessed with a leadership team at a district level and at the building levels. You guys are amazing. You're working hard. Uh, you're taking accountability. So, so grateful. Uh, magic, you're working miracles, um, getting our kids to school. It is hard, hard work. Your dedication is so appreciated. And I know that as a board, we sit here and awe of the work you do. So thank you so much. Also, we have a new record holder. Very humble and.
I was going to say that.
Finally does she hold the record for uh the most baskets made in, over the course of your whole history, right, of playing at high school for women, but also for men. Is that correct?
Yeah, Jordan's.
An all-time record and it's just ratcheting up every game. So we're.
He did some flubs or so.
Give it to you.
That is cute. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, uh, but your hard work over the course of, you've put in the dedication and you're so humble. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. And again, our community members, we couldn't do this without you. You're a very, very great part. But that, I'm going to keep it short because I want to get out of here by now.
I'm saying, uh,
Too late?
Eatonville's chess team beat Sammy from Tacoma. Anytime he beat an acronym of school.
Oh, I was, uh, we went and visited the chess team kids and I was afraid they were going to challenge us to a game because they are wicked smart.
They tried and luckily we had.
We're too busy. Warehouser made the cutest little card. That was so, so nice. All right. We're going to end on a happy note to eight fifty-nine. Thanks for an awesome meeting. Appreciate you all.
Flowers?
Top notch.
That's awesome.